Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan submersible tragedy. This video will conclude the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing by one of Ocean Gate's co-founders, Guillermo Sonline. Those of you who follow this channel and watched the first half of this testimony will know I found it a tricky one to cover and a little frustrating. And I have to thank my viewers for their comments on that video. Some of your comments really succinctly explained what I was myself struggling a little to get across with regards to Mr. Sonline. It was also reassuring to know that I was not alone or being overly critical in that video and my own assessment of it. As I said, this testimony is a tricky one, at least for me, as on one hand, Mr. Sonline departed his position with the company before Titan. And so it is difficult to place any blame on him directly in regards to what eventually happened. Though on the other hand, I think the line between the influence he had before he left and what he had no input on remain kind of blurred. This is something I will touch upon more at the end of this video, as we do have the second half of this testimony to watch still, so I will keep this brief for now. It is also frustrating for me that I have to apologize again that this video was uploaded later than promised. But I am able to give you an exact date when things will return to some relative normality on this channel. And that date is March 4th. So after that date, things will definitely begin to pick up pace once again, as I was averaging seven to eight videos per month. So I do look forward to getting back to that kind of number again. So again, I thank you all dearly for your patience and understanding. It will not be required for much longer now, and I plan to repay you all with consistent content. Anyway, enough rambling, there'll be plenty of time for that at the end. So for now, let's just get started with the second and final part of Guillermo Sonline's testimony. Thank you as ever for clicking on this video.
Sir, Mr. Fawcett, I have some questions for you.
So were you actually a member of the Marine Technology Society?
Well, more than that, I was a member of the MTS. I was a member of the Mandated Water Vehicles Committee, which was chaired by Will Conan. And for I think a year or two, I was chair of the MTS Ocean Exploration Committee.
So my questions relate to the same timeframe as Commander Whalen's up until including the Accident Day, June 18, 2023. So were you aware that during 2018, a group of volunteers at the Marine Technology Society had drafted a letter of concern about Ocean Gate operations in draft form?
I learned about that afterwards. In fact, I don't even know how I learned about that. Obviously, by then I not only left the company, I was no longer a member of MTS and I was not an active participant in the committees. But yeah, honestly, I don't, I don't even remember how I learned about that.
As a former member, do you recall seeing that draft letter?
No, in fact, to this day, I've never read it.
I think, I believe, I believe there was testimony that he was not a member of that committee at the time or that organization at the time it was drafted, so.
Okay, I understand that. So I guess let me rephrase the question. Even though you were not a member of the MTS, did you ever see a draft of a letter of concern ahead of the accident, sir?
No, no, and to this day, I've never read it. I've never seen it.
So the Board of Directors at Ocean Gate, what was the purpose of the board?
What was the purpose of any board or that board in particular at that time?
That board, sir.
That's a good question because Board of Directors evolve over time as the organization evolves. I think in the early days of any startup and including Ocean Gate, the Board of Directors is really there kind of to provide kind of regulatory mandated corporate oversight. And I think early on in a small board, sorry, in a startup board, it's usually a small board. And you usually have the co-founders and maybe one or two people as tiebreakers in any sort of strategic vote. So I think at the time, the board, just like with any other startup, the board in early stages doesn't have a lot of responsibilities. It's there to kind of prepare the company for a future growth phase. And to be kind of a sounding board for the management team, specifically the CEO.
Did Ocean Gate Foundation have a board, pardon me, a Board of Directors?
I believe that what we called it was a Board of Trustees, I think. But yes, it did. And in fact, for when we founded it, I was, I was one of the trustees. And then we quickly realized that was our first, any of us, that was our first dealing with 501(c)(3)'s. And we realized that the IRS was going to have a problem with too much overlap between the for-profit company and the foundation. So I stepped down from the board and I basically ceased all my activities with the foundation and just focused exclusively on Ocean Gate Inc.
So do you recall if the bylaws of Ocean Gate and the Board of Directors required minutes of those board meetings to be created?
No, I do not remember that.
And then you mentioned retired Coast Guard Admiral John Lockwood. When did you be, not specific dates, but when did you become aware of that individual, retired Coast Guard Admiral Lockwood?
I don't remember. In fact, I'm trying to remember if I've even met him in person. And I don't remember how Stockton met him either. But I know Stockton spoke very highly of him and really wanted him involved in the company. But honestly, I don't remember if that was while I was still there or not.
Do you know what expertise he was expected to bring to the Ocean Gate Board of Directors?
No, but I imagine it had to do with the fact that he was a retired Coast Guard Admiral, right? And as Commander Whalen asked earlier, you know, maybe help us figure out how to navigate through some of the Coast Guard regulations so that we could operate in U.S. waters.
So at any time, did Ocean Gate or anyone working as a contractor for Ocean Gate, were they employed to deal with the question of passengers? In other words, it's a very complex term. We talk about mission specialists, compensation and so forth. So did Ocean Gate, to your knowledge, employ somebody to help you, for example, with the specific definition of mission specialist?
Objection.
Okay, understand Ocean Gate.
I don't know if Mr. Sonline understood the question, but I did not.
Understand, and I don't think we've discussed mission specialists yet.
Okay, with this witness. Do you understand what a mission specialist is when with regards to Ocean Gate?
Yeah, but I was going to ask you for clarification on what you mean by helping me deal with it. Like, do you mean like somebody who understood the regulations and was going to help us with regulatory compliance? Is that what you mean?
Yes, correct. In other words, the people that pay with Ocean Gate to go on the submersible are called mission specialists. So did.
Is that a question for Mr. Sonline?
Yeah, I don't really understand the question, sir. Can you rephrase, Mr. Fawcett?
Yes. Did someone help or contract to help create the definition of mission specialist related to Ocean Gate operations?
From a marketing perspective or from a regulatory perspective? From a marketing perspective, yes, because we had marketing people onboard. From a regulatory perspective, no, I don't think so. We, I don't think we, I don't remember hiring anybody to specifically deal with that.
And were the submersibles operated while you were there at Ocean Gate? Were they insured for their operations?
So I know you said submersible is plural, but while I was there, we just had the one, we just had Antipodes. And I do not remember if they were insured or not. I don't remember.
Sir, at this time, I'd like to transfer the questioning over to the National Transportation Safety Board, Mr. Muse.
You said you get to visit several different sector commands around the country. And they had different requirements, obviously. Did any of them ask for emergency response plans that would help out in a search and rescue case?
Every, every one of them. I think it was part of operating as an ORV.
That's an ORV, okay. How about, did any of them ask for some sort of state registration? I noticed that, I believe, both Antipodes and Cyclops have, are registered in Washington. Was that original or did somebody, one of the sector commanders ask for that?
Yeah, I don't remember anybody asking for that, but we did register Antipodes. That was one of the first things, that was one of my first exposures to regulatory compliance with a submersible. I had to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles in Washington and fill out a form. And I had to check a box for what I was trying to, to register. And there was no box, surprise, surprise, there was no box for submersible. I had to go ask one of the clerks what box I should check. And, and I described it. She said, well, why don't you check the box for submerged platform or something like that? And so that's what I had to do to get the registration number for, for Antipodes. And so, yeah, I don't think anybody asked us for it, but we had it. And so we just provided it wherever we went.
Both Cyclops and Antipodes were classed before you purchased them. Did they have any sort of flag registration where they were operating before?
Okay, just point of clarification, we did not buy Cyclops, we built Cyclops. What we bought was the Lula 500 from, from the Azores. And as far as flagging them, their prior, I don't remember. Like I said, we were the third owners of Antipodes. The second owners were a tourism operation out of New Zealand. And I don't remember if it was flagged in New Zealand. As Tim Catterston testified last week, he was the chief pilot for the former, for the second owner. Maybe he remembers, I don't know. And, and for the Lula 500, the people that we bought it from, the organization that we bought it from is now operating the Lula 1000. And they may know if they were flagged in the Azores, but I don't remember.
Did Lula 500 come with its own Lars platform or is that something you built in the, in the transition to Cyclops?
No, actually, if we go back to Commander Whalen's questioning about the business model and why we didn't want a dedicated mothership. This, this was something that we started developing even with Antipodes, even while we had Antipodes. Because we knew that having a, at the time, we called it an LRT, a Launch Retrieval and Transport System. That was going to be key to bringing down the cost of operations and thereby kind of opening up access to the oceans by using smaller ships. And we didn't come up with that idea on our own. That was something that the University of Hawaii had pioneered for years when they were diving their Pisces 4 and 5 subs. Their LRT allowed them to not have to have a ship with a crane. And they would tow the subs out to dive sites and then submerge them with the LRT. They were very helpful with us. They, and they shared with us a lot of their, their designs and their plans for their LRT. And we took that and started modifying it for our uses. And, and yeah, so we started doing that even while I was there. Started doing some rudimentary tests, tests with it back then. So no, neither the Lula 500 nor Antipodes came with an LRT, but we did build the system.
Was there any discussion with the Coast Guard on updating the NAVIC to maybe help you meet your business goals? I mean, at this point, it's 20 years old in the timeframe we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we had discussions with, with the Coast Guard and updating that back then. And you can ask Will Conan when he testifies, we just had discussions with him as recently as last fall. And Will had an amazing interaction with, with him, which, which I thought was, was very fascinating. But look, at, at the end of the day, there's kind of a chicken and egg kind of thing, right? No sub is going to come operate in U.S. waters because the NAVIC doesn't really allow for flexibility to do that in a way that makes sense, business sense for the sub operator. And on the other hand, the Coast Guard has no incentive to change or update NAVIC 593 until there is a sub operating in U.S. waters. So it's a chicken and egg thing. And Will can testify to the interaction he had with the Coast Guard representative at the conference last month or last year. But at one point, the Coast Guard representative gave a, gave a great answer. Will said, look, if you don't change the NAVIC 593, we're never going to have deep diving subs operating in U.S. waters. And his response was, I understand that, but that's not my mandate. My mandate is not economic development. My mandate is public safety. And it would be a waste of taxpayer money to develop new regulations when there's no one to use them. And so it's, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. And I don't envision that changing anytime in the near future. Because honestly, as an American taxpayer, I'd agree with the Coast Guard, right? Until there's a need for it, it's a waste of taxpayer money to, to update that NAVIC 593. And that is how the NAVIC was updated, you know, 40 years ago. There was a company that wanted to bring subs into U.S. waters. And so there was, there was a justification for it back then.
Are there other national regulatory schemes around the world that we could possibly emulate or get ideas from? I know the UK has some, the franchise, we heard last week that the Cayman Islands have some. Are any of those, are there any ideas there that we can turn to?
I don't know, because the entire time I was at Ocean Gate, we only operated in U.S. waters. And that was the only thing I was, I was familiar with. But Will Conan is probably the best person to ask about that.
What do you think is the best platform to regulate this industry? Would it be the IMO or flag, individual flag states? Or should we just rely on class or just, or just go with industry standards?
That's always a difficult question to ask an operator. Because that's, that's not my, that's not my wheelhouse, right? That's not what, what I would do. What I will say is this, this is not an industry, right? We talk about industry standards, this is not an industry. It's, it's at most, again, you can ask Will Conan, he'll have the numbers, but it's at most 100 subs in the world operating. And if you talk about deep diving subs, there's probably less than 10. I can only think of six, and that's including the five government subs. You know, it's, it's not really an industry. And so coming up with even standards is, is difficult to do, you know, in an emerging kind of field like this. So I don't know what the right way is to regulate this, this kind of activity. And I probably wouldn't look at the submersible world. I'd look for other fields to see what they did in their regulatory scheme. Like for example, right now, there's a big, a big push worldwide with EV tool, electric vertical takeoff and landing aircraft or air taxis. Maybe that's somewhere to look, you know? I don't know, but that's certainly not my, my expertise.
Okay, thank you for that. Antipodes was built in the UK, is that, do I have that right?
Ooh, now you're digging way back.
It was not built in the U.S., is where I'm, it's not American built, though. Is that correct?
I, I do not. So the original sub was a Perry-class diver lockout system, a Perry 1201. And I think Perry was a UK company. So yes, originally it was built in the UK.
So even if we were to update the regulations or the NAVIC to allow you to carry passengers to depths, those, both Cyclops and Antipodes, the law would prevent you from carrying passengers in U.S. waters anyway. Is that, do I understand that right?
I'd, I'd have to dig into that more. I don't know. Because for example, like I said, Antipodes, the Perry 1201 was built in the UK. But Antipodes was basically the front third of the PC 1201. It was the pilot section of the 1201. And that work was done in Florida. So I don't know if carving up an existing large sub and turning it into a smaller sub qualifies as being built in the U.S. for legal and regulatory purposes. I have no idea. I have to look at that. Likewise with Cyclops, you know, I don't remember where the Lula 500 was built. I think Patrick Leahy would probably know because I think he was involved with it. But the fact that stripping it down to its pressure hull and reassembling it as something new called Cyclops, and that was done in, in the U.S., I don't know if that would qualify under the Jones Act for, for this kind of thing.
Okay, and lastly, did Mr. Hawke, or what, what lessons did Mr. Hawke share about building carbon fiber hulls? Or any lessons learned from the, the one that he had built, was later called the Deep Flight Challenger, I believe?
Yes, correct. I don't remember, because a lot of that was, were lessons learned from an engineering perspective. So those were conversations that he would have with Stockton, since they're both aerospace engineers and they were both looking at that. The thing I do remember is him saying that carbon fiber is doable, it's viable for certain uses underwater. I don't know if he meant for full ocean depth. I don't know if he meant for 4,000 meters. I don't know if he meant for 30 meters. But, but I think right now, he's probably the, the world's leading expert on using carbon fiber for pressured vessels for deep submersibles.
Sir, this is Jason Newbauer. I just have a couple of follow-up questions from the initial lines. Sir, after you departed Ocean Gate, did anyone from the MTS ever reach out to you with safety concerns regarding Ocean Gate's Titan expeditions to the Titanic wreckage?
I don't think so. I think I would have remembered if they did. No.
Sir, during the Antipodes operations, were the guests who were donating or paying for the excursions limited to scientists?
No, I think that's about when we started, like I said earlier, I think that's when we started experimenting with this, this concept of a mission specialist, kind of borrowing from the Earthwatch model. And so what we would do is we would have people who would kind of be trained on fulfilling different functions within, within the dive, whether it was assisting the pilot or assisting the researcher or assisting the data collection.
And sir, when you met with the various Coast Guard sector commanders, would you make the argument that those mission specialists were part of the crew of the oceanographic research vessel?
So honestly, because this was so critical and so important and yet so vague, every, at least every conversation I had with the Coast Guard, I was open with them. And I just told them, look, here's, because again, most of the sector commanders had never even seen NAVIC 593 or didn't know what, what an ORV was when it came to subs. And I had to explain to them what we were trying to do. And I would explain to them, look, this is what we're trying to do, right? We're trying to create a financial model that allows us to find a way of funding oceanographic research in a way that currently can't be done because researchers don't have the funds to do this. And we're trying to do this in U.S. waters. We're trying to comply with the ORV regulations. And this is what we've come up with. And we realized this is kind of shoehorning it in. But this is how we're kind of, you know, trying to, to, to meet the requirements of both our business and the Coast Guard. And I was just, personally, I was in conversations, I was upfront with, with the Coast Guard and tried getting them to help me figure out how to make this all work. And like I said, some of the sector commands were open to that. And some of them said, no, it's clearly your passenger vessel and I'm not going to let you operate in, in our sector.
And sir, along those, to follow up on that, do you remember the actual areas that the Antipodes ended up operating in?
Yeah, so obviously in Puget Sound, so we operated there. We operated in, while I was there, we operated in Monterey, California. And that fell under the San Francisco sector. We operated in Catalina Island, which fell under the LA Long Beach sector. And then we operated off the coast of Miami, which obviously fell into the Miami sector. And by the way, one of the reasons, you know, the, the letter that Commander Whalen put up earlier from August 2012 from, from the Coast Guard, the reason it was dated then, even though we had moved there in January, is because when we first got there, we were doing training dives, right? We had never operated on the Atlantic Ocean. We'd never operated on the East Coast. And so a lot of what we were doing was training dives. And when I got there, I had to hire a bunch of new people. And so we spent a long time, like months, just learning how to dive the sub, how to dive the sub safely and how to do it basically within five miles of Miami. So really initially, we didn't really need that kind of approval because it was basically training dives. But when we got to the point where we felt comfortable diving in Miami and we were going to try kind of pushing this mission specialist business model, that's when we asked for, for approval from, from the Coast Guard. But we had already, like I said before, we had already had these discussions with the Coast Guard before we made the decision to move to Miami.
Thank you, sir. And just to clarify then, can you, can you clarify which areas you dove with mission specialists out of the areas you just provided before?
You mean paying mission specialists, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't remember because we did not do it in Miami. And by the way, one of the reasons, just a quick finishing up that thought on the letter from, from the Coast Guard in Miami, now that I'm kind of thinking through this. I remember being disappointed that we got rejected because we had done so much prep work before we moved to Miami. And I remember one of the things that happened is that was one of the sectors that I believe had a change in sector commander from the time we made the decision until we went. And the new sector commander just didn't like the idea of having subs in, in his sector. Which made sense because at the time, both the Coast Guard and the Border Patrol were dealing with drug cartels from South America using submersibles to smuggle drugs into U.S. waters, specifically in South Florida. So I could totally understand, you know, why they weren't comfortable with, with that. So we didn't do it there. We didn't do it in Catalina. We didn't do it in Puget Sound. Did we do it the first time? We had two, two expeditions to Monterey, as you pointed out earlier. The second one was for market awareness. Maybe we did it on the first one. Honestly, I don't remember. I don't remember if anyone actually ever paid, now that I think about it. But obviously, I'd have to go back and look at the financial records and see what, what actually happened back then.
Thank you, sir. And just one last follow-up on that. Was it your perception that even after the Coast Guard local sector commanders would consult with headquarters, that the decisions were inconsistent? In your opinion?
Within the sectors that were comfortable with us operating, no, I think they were consistent. And within the sectors that didn't want us operating, I think they were consistent. I think what was inconsistent was whether or not they were comfortable with us diving there or operating there or not. But again, I could understand it because the sector commanders had, had a certain amount of discretion. And, and I could understand why Miami and LA may think differently than Seattle or San Francisco or Baltimore. So, yeah, it was, I, I think they were consistent within the two categories of denial or, or acceptance. I don't know if that's answers your question, but yeah.
It does. And sir, one other question. Were you aware that if under domestic certification, like the Atlanta submarines, that the depth of the dives would be greatly limited?
Yeah, actually, someone mentioned earlier that, you know, even if the regulations allowed us to take paying passengers, you know, would that have made a difference? The limitation for us wasn't necessarily the getting paid part, although that was, that was a part of it. The limitation with the NAVIC 593 is on the operations. And I mean, it's, the requirements are ridiculous because they were written for Atlanta subs, right? So for example, one of the requirements, I don't know if it's still the same, but what I remember from back then, one of the requirements is that the sub pilot had to have a Coast Guard 100-ton captain's license. Which of course made sense if you're operating an Atlanta submarine that's carrying 70 people. But when you're piloting Antipodes, which is like 15 feet long and carries five people, it just doesn't make sense to require the sub pilot to have a 100-ton license. Likewise, the, the passenger vessel, at least back then, if I remember correctly, I don't know what it is now. The passenger vessel had to be, had to follow a pre-approved route every single time. You know, for us, we called it, you know, the tour bus, right? It's basically you're kind of going, doing laps around a lagoon, which is, makes sense. It's perfectly great for a tourism business. But when you're carrying out deep ocean exploration and research, you have no idea where you're going. You know generally where you're going, but you don't know what path you're going to take or what, what route you're going to take. And, and we certainly weren't going to follow it every single time, right? Researchers needed to move around, explorers needed to move around, filmmakers needed to move around. And so. And so it was a lot of the operational restrictions that hurt us more than anything else.
Does the board have any final questions for this witness? Mr. Fawcett?
To your knowledge, sir, were mission specialists ever paid?
I don't know. So, so it's interesting because as we're talking, it's kind of jarring my memory and jogging some thoughts. You know, as we went through a lot of this interaction with the Coast Guard and the sector commanders that were, or their staffs that were trying to help us figure out how to get this done in a way that made sense for us and also complied with regulations. One of the thoughts that we had at one point was, well, under an ORV, one of the categories that's allowed to be in the sub are owners of the subs. So we actually thought about, at one point, we, I don't think we ended up doing this, but we actually toyed with the idea of giving every mission specialist a share of ownership in the company, right? Because, I mean, it sounds ridiculous, but at least it would help them qualify as legitimate owners of the sub. We ended up not doing that because it was just going to be horrendously, logistically a nightmare. So one of the other categories of people that could be in the sub were crew. And so we actually thought about, well, what if we pay crew members and mission specialists? And maybe we pay them a dollar, you know, it's consideration. And again, it sounds ridiculous, but we thought, and some of the Coast Guard sectors thought, you know, I don't know, maybe that would qualify. I don't know. I don't think we ended up doing that, though. Again, I'd have to check. I don't think we ended up paying anybody. What we ended up defaulting to was the last category, which was researchers. And researchers within the ORV, if I remember correctly, was defined broadly enough that it could include people who were in training and people who were learning or people who were assisting a researcher. And ultimately, I think that's what we ended up defaulting to. And that's the part of the ORV that we ended up going through.
So were you offered an opportunity to take a dive on the Titan?
Many times.
And did you take a dive on the Titan?
No, but two thoughts on that. One is, every year that Titan went to Titanic, Stockton would always call me before we went to see if I wanted to go. He wanted me there. Even if I was just on surface ops, I didn't have to go on a dive. I didn't, as a shareholder, I didn't want to take up room in the sub. I wanted to make that available for the people that the dive was intended for. And I never went on any of the expeditions. But the reason I didn't go is because neither Stockton nor I were ever driven by tourism. We were never motivated by going somewhere that people had already been before. The reason we got into this was because we both wanted to explore. We wanted to not only explore ourselves, but create the technologies that would allow other explorers to explore the ocean. So going to see a shipwreck that had already been well documented and that a bunch of people had already gone to, that didn't excite me. It didn't excite Stockton. So I never really had a desire to go on any of the expeditions. And I wanted to make room on the sub for people like Renata, who, you know, that was their life dream to go to the Titanic. Well, great, let her go. I don't have to go. Now that's for the Titanic expeditions. Now for diving Titan in particular, I will tell you this, before the first crewed test dive of Titan, the first time that anybody was in the sub when Titan went down at 4,000 meters, as you already know, that dive was done by Stockton by himself. And he and I talked a month or two before he went down there. And he was telling me that it was finally time to actually take Titan on a test dive. And I believe that was Titan won the first hole. And he said, basically, he was telling me, it's time to put a human in there and we're going to do the test dive. And I said, well, who's going to, I'm assuming you're going to pilot it. And he says, yeah, I'm piloting it. I said, great, who else is going with you? And he said, nobody. I said, what do you mean, nobody? He goes, I don't want anybody else in the sub. If anything happens, I want it to only impact me. It's my design. I believe in it, I trust it, but I don't want to risk anybody else and I'm going to go by myself. Now, I've been on long dives before and I know making a long dive by yourself, especially on test dive, is not a fun activity. And so my response to him at the time, I kind of felt like I was reliving the graduation scene from the original Top Gun. I felt like the character Viper, you know, I kind of told him the same thing Viper told Maverick. I said, look, you're going to go by yourself, but if you get down there and you feel that you need a co-pilot, give me a call and I'll dive with you. And he said, thanks, I appreciate it, but I think I'm going to have to do this one by myself.
So you mentioned long dives. Are you referring to dives in submersibles to the deep ocean depths of approximately 3,000 meters?
No, no. You mean from my personal experience?
Yes, sir.
No, no. I think the deepest I ever dove was with Antipodes, 300 meters. But one thing that we did as a test dive in Miami, we always said that Antipodes carried eight to 10 hours of life support and consumables, in addition to the 72 hours of emergency life support. But one of the things that we realized is our average duration of our dives was only like two, two and a half hours. We would never really down, I think the longest dive we did was like three hours, maybe four hours. And rationale for that was, you know, it gets uncomfortable after a while to be in the sub that long. And so there was no reason to really make anybody uncomfortable. And so we never really dove that long. But one of the things that we thought about while we were in Miami is, look, if we're going to keep saying that the sub can dive for eight to 10 hours, we should dive it for eight to 10 hours and test the limits of it. So we did create a dive plan where me and one of the other sub pilots and our research director at the time, where the three of us went in the sub and we dove it for eight hours. We, I think the deepest we went was like 800 feet. But yeah, eight hours was more than enough time for me as far as staying in a sub. And I was there with two other people. I can't imagine being in the sub that long by yourself, the way Jim Cameron was when he went down to Challenger Deep.
Sir, just one quick follow up. Back in 2012, Ocean Gate Expeditions was operating the Antipodes. We believe that they attempted to file as a foreign company in Florida. Do you remember that, sir? Is that accurate?
Well, so first of all, you said Ocean Gate Expeditions. As far as I know, Ocean Gate Expeditions was a subsidiary or something, it was a separate legal entity that was created later, after I left. And
Sir, I'll just rephrase then. Do you know if there was ever talk about filing as a foreign company and operating in the US?
Okay, now you changed the question because now you said in the US. Because operating, registering as a foreign company in Florida, yeah, we probably had to do that because it's considered a foreign company if it's coming from another state. And if we were going to have employees in Florida, we probably did need to file as a foreign company in the state of Florida. As far as filing as a foreign company in the US, I don't know where we'd be filing from because we were an American company. I don't know.
Sir, no, that explains, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have anything that you'd like to offer to the board that we have not asked you at this time, sir?
Yeah, probably about five hours worth, but let's, I know we don't have time for that. Maybe, maybe I'll maybe give some closing thoughts, if you don't mind. You know, as I think back through everything that's happened over the last year, this was not supposed to happen, right? This shouldn't have happened. Five people should not have lost their lives. Four families should not be mourning their loved ones. And I don't know what happened. I don't know who made, what decision, when, and based on what information. And honestly, I don't know if any of us will ever know this, despite all of your team's investigative efforts. I don't know if we'll ever know the answers to all of this. And regardless, as Renata said last week, none of this is going to bring our friends back. However, I hope that all of us can find some good in all of this sadness. I hope that we can find some silver linings. I hope we can find some valuable lessons learned that we can all carry forward and continue exploring the deep oceans and in some way do that to preserve the legacies of the five people who lost their lives. And, you know, thinking back to last week, you know, Patrick Leahy said very eloquently, right, the deep ocean is a magical place. And like Patrick, I hope that many, 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 many more people will get to experience it firsthand. But it looks like Ocean Gate's not going to be a part of that effort. And so I can only hope that others will be inspired by the mission that Stockton and I started back in 2009 and that so many dedicated Ocean Gate team members, investors, partners, mission specialists contributed to over the years since that founding. And, you know, this can't be the end of deep ocean exploration. This can't be the end of deep diving submersibles, and I don't believe that it will be. But I hope that someday in the near future, we'll look back on this time as a major turning point in human history, when the global general public finally took an active interest in all of our efforts, everything that all of us do to explore the deep oceans, to study them and to preserve them. And I think if that happens, then that's probably the most fitting tribute for the memories of these five individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So that concludes the testimony given by Guillermo Sonline. And to be honest, I'm kind of glad to be done with it. As those who saw the previous video will know, I did find this testimony a tricky one to cover and the second half didn't exactly help a great deal. So to try and give some final thoughts, I'm glad that the Coast Guard got through all of the questions that they wanted to ask and that towards the end, those questions grew more specific, such as when focusing on mission specialists, for example, or what correspondence Ocean Gate had with the Coast Guard during their operations, at least those that were undertaken when Mr. Sonline was still present at the company. And I think this is where it has made it to struggle for me to approach this like previous testimonies, as it is hard to pick fault specifically at Mr. Sonline when thinking about Titan, for example, or the approach taken leading to its manufacture, as he was no longer at the company. This doesn't necessarily mean that he is totally blameless, of course, though, which was another thing that kind of frustrated me and made me feel like, being an observer and listener, I was witnessing calculated corporate speak. And usually, I don't look at the original live stream chat, as I like to approach these videos from a neutral perspective, but I just couldn't help but take a look on this occasion. And many of the voices there felt similarly to me, as did many of you who commented on my previous video. To me, it just felt like Mr. Sonline was kind of projecting himself as a holier-than-holy kind of way, almost as if he could do no wrong. It is easy to make a bold statement, point a finger, and perhaps state the obvious, though on this channel, these videos do try to dig a little deeper, maybe connect some loose ends with other testimonies and not just be kind of a reaction channel. Though I did find it difficult to do with this one and have spent more energy than I probably should have, trying to get something down substantially about it, and in some areas, just making some sense of it all. Making these videos means I usually end up seeing the testimonies two, maybe three times before they're uploaded. And this is the first time I felt kind of unfulfilled and even a little non-the-wiser after covering one. There is of course, new information here, and I don't want to sound like there isn't. And it was interesting to hear about the forming of Ocean Gate in the previous video and about all the problems that they faced in regards to try and to procure a sub and operate in US waters. And towards the end of this video, we got a small peek behind the curtain in hearing Mr. Sonline's thoughts on Stockton Rush. It was kind of crazy to hear how they considered giving passengers a share in the company to make them part owners, to enable them to dive and then meet requirements. And just in general, it was interesting to hear about the various ways they thought of to navigate the law. Still, to give an analogy, this testimony felt to me like a job description or something similar that uses positive, appealing wording, though you soon find out that that reality is different and that things aren't always as shiny and neat and tidy as first promised. And what also annoyed me a little is that it seemed like the Coast Guard or the regulations in place were almost being blamed for Ocean Gate's eventual path, citing how few subs were actually out there and how expensive it is to enter the field, especially to operate as Ocean Gate would want to, and also to get certified. Then we heard how the solution, which is stated to have been right up Stockton Rush's street, was to find a better engineering solution. So on one hand, I understand the desire to make the oceans more accessible and be innovative in the field, but I honestly don't feel comfortable calling what Ocean Gate did innovative. The word just doesn't seem to sit right. I know in previous videos of mine, some viewers have commented how we wouldn't have planes today, for example, if it wasn't for innovation, and that the Wright brothers didn't have regulations and weren't certified. But the way I see it, speaking purely in terms of Ocean Gate, the Wright brothers did not have 50 years of safe operations in the field with zero fatalities before them. It's just not the same. There were strict guidelines in place for Ocean Gate, and even if they are outdated now and restrictive and perhaps need revising, I don't know, of course, I am no expert. But regardless, these regulations have kept people in subs alive for decades. And the way to be innovative in this field is not to go rogue, manufacture and operate a vessel using a material that is questionable, doing limited testing, and then starting to carry passengers right away, all the while ignoring numerous warnings from experts in the field, for example, MTS or Patrick Leahy, when he himself was invited to view Titan and expressed his concerns. I just don't feel that that is true innovation. If anything, Ocean Gate's so-called innovation has damaged the industry, not added anything to it. And from listening to Mr. Sonline's testimony, it almost sounds like Ocean Gate were forced down this path that they took, which of course is just not true. They chose it. And also, if the price of a sub is beyond what your company can feasibly afford, perhaps you just shouldn't be in the sub industry, instead of going ahead regardless, finding a better engineering solution, as Mr. Sonline stated, and as we've heard from previous testimonies, cutting corners. Anyway, I feel like I almost need to apologize for this outro, as it's not as in-depth and thorough as those previous, though I don't want to just ramble on for the sake of it and in turn begin just using filler words and thoughts to try and bulk it up and risk doing the exact thing that I was critical of Mr. Sonline for. So I will leave it here for now and will be glad to move on to the next one, if I'm honest. There are a few extra things I could have added here, but I do have a plan for these. That being, after these testimonies and the documentation videos have been covered, I will be making kind of a follow-up documentary in the same vein as my original one, with plans for it to be kind of a two years later from the incident. This is this is what we've learned kind of video. So I am saving a few things for that and I'm really looking forward to making that video and for all of you to see it. As I said at the start of this video, from March 4th, uploads will return to a more consistent schedule. And I do thank you all again for your patience and understanding. I really have felt bad that, for example, I promised this video much earlier that I managed to actually get it uploaded as I don't like to make promises and then not keep them. But it is just over a week away now from March 4th and I'm really looking forward to getting some damn videos made and in a much more timely fashion. So until our next video and before my voice dies, thank you very, very much for watching this one and I do look forward to hearing your thoughts on this testimony. Thank you very much once again and bye for now.